I'm here.
Hey. Okay, so tonight is the first kickoff basically of FY 2025 capital for the Board of Education. And we'll be going through the initial very, very first draft kind of layout of our fiscal year 25 15 year plan. First thing as we get started, I do want to thank the staff that have put in tons of hours to get us here where we are today with what we're looking at. Specifically, Dan, Kim, Patrick Lai, a bunch of the principals have provided feedback this year. Also Pete from Athletics went through a bunch of stuff with us for capital. And then we've also been partnering with Parks and Recreation, we'll give them a shout out. They take care of all our property and all of our athletic equipment. We're doing two joint studies that we'll talk about, about like evaluating all of our courts and infrastructure and trying to get some of that, at least on our planning. Piece. And then we've also been engaging other town departments. We reached out recently to like risk management, to have the risk manager start taking a look at some of these requests and maybe have the insurance company for the town. Take a look at maybe some of the items we had talked about, like with flooding or other risk reduction, how do our projects relate to things like that? So it's, it's been a lot of staff members have put a lot of work into it. Some background on, on quick background on capital to how we get here today. Remember that we put together our request last year in our book for capital. We put our 15 year plan and our project sheets, which are the appropriating sheets. We submit for capital to the first selectmen's office. So this year in October, right after our meeting, we'll adjust the sheets and submit to the first selectmen's office. But then after the process, unlike operating, unlike our operating budget, which is really largely to the town, a lump sum dollar amount. And this is a legal appropriation of each account. Capital gets appropriated by the town's capital book. This is also online and so you have the 15 year capital schedule and then each of the project sheets that are the appropriating document. For us, this is 2024. So this is the piece that made it through at the end at the, basically through the RTM and what actually got appropriated. And then that is our starting point for putting together 2025. Cause you have all of the information on what was funded by the, you know, because it starts here. And then it's through the first selectman and through the BET and there we also get new information throughout the process and the RTM and we make adjustments. And, and so here we are, this is like our starting point. And we take that 15 year plan essentially shifted over a year. And then we did what I just mentioned, which was meet with all the staff and with a focus on FY 25. Just some background that this will be the first draft and there's, there's going to be some items that were, are still very fluid on here. Dr. Jones mentioned that we are in really doing a lot of like studying and understand, understanding where like some of our infrastructure is standing now. And so we're waiting back. Well, actually we just got the garage report, which fell handout. We didn't get that until like after five o'clock last night, the final version. And so we got the number in there off one of the options, but it's very fluid and we're just getting for Hamilton Avenue parking garage. We did the study and we just got the recommendations on the garage. And so we're still going to be changing some items. There probably be a typo or two. What, what we're trying to do is work really closely with Dan and I'm going to give Kim a huge shout out here for doing a lot of work on this is basically. Get all of the data into one spot. We're taking, we started it last year, we're taking like what we had from KDG plan. Where we've gone over the last X number of years to now where things actually stand, what's been funded. Taking all of Dan's information that he has extensively on, on lots of spreadsheets and also in his head, getting that all mapped out in one spot. The long-term goal of that, just, and I talked about this at the BET Audit Committee on Tuesday as well. Is really in joint partnership like with DPW and other towns that have major capital is to have on the backend. A status of really all of our infrastructure and that, that then informs. Your 15 year, you know, capital plan and your request every year. And we have a lot of the information, but it's really organizing it now into a system that can then be systematically. You know, programmed throughout a number of years. So think like HVAC. What the end goal here, we're partially of the way there and it's just going to take more time than one year. But as we organize the data, the goal here is like to have HVAC every single school. The system installation date, lifecycle, and then that informs replacement date. And we also will do that for like, we'll have that organized and we have it partially, but it's getting. It's kind of all these different pieces. It's going out, doing some audits and it's doing that for roofs, for security system, for fire alarm. For every element of our building, one of our requests we'll talk about is like all of our underground drainage and sewage lines. It's starting to get in there and do the same thing for those. The nice step would be, once we, once we map that all out, it really informs like probably 80% of the day to day capital. I mean, your boiler.
Blaze, can I jump in just for a second? Cause obviously you'll fly through stuff and questions might disappear from my brain. So I'm gonna ask when I can. Are you saying that we didn't map this stuff out before that we're just doing that for the first time?
I'm not saying that we didn't do it before. I'm saying that this would maybe be the first time we're using this format of doing it. And connecting it specifically to this capital appropriation process. And more importantly, putting all of the maps, all the puzzle pieces in one spot.
So you'd rather not answer my question?
It was originally done by KGND who actually went through a similar process. I would say this is probably going to be a little bit more thorough than what we even had before. So it's really refining the whole process that we started back in 2018.
So it's clearly an upgrade and I agree, this is good. I was just concerned about the past that we hadn't done this, which worries me knowing that we at least did it to some degree. Is somewhat reassuring, but it's also very encouraging that we're doing it much better. So thank you.
Oh yeah. And better understanding your question is helpful because that's, that's right. And, and to be very clear, Dan has a lot of this information, you know, and well documented. And he also has a really good team. And we have like our trades foreman Dom, who is excellent and has a lot of it organized. I would say some of it is really, really organized institutionally. And some of it is really organized on paper and, and we want to connect to make sure that it's not dependent on any people. But because we were very lucky that we have really good people. The goal to then take that to your point would be. A lot of these systems are managed on, this is what we talked about the audit committee the other day with the BET. A lot of these systems are managed like on Excel sheets. There's no point in getting a software system if you, if your data is not quite organized to where it should be. But we can then take this and get like an asset management system that's connected with our work order system. And you'll have your data that's doing your capital planning. And then at the same time, we already mapped it all out. So we know every single boiler. Every boiler requires annual maintenance and we're lucky that right now we have, we, you know, we have really good staff that stay on top of it. But the system, we can upload it into a work order system. So every November, you know, it's pulling the Hamilton Avenue. It's pulling New Lebanon, it's pulling X, Y, and Z, and it's doing that for all of our elements automatically. Which it's getting done right now, but it's getting done, you know, through spreadsheets and trying to track it. And so that's kind of the long-term vision of how this all plays together. There was a lot of me talking about it, but that's, I wanted you to understand if we're doing like some transitionary stuff, that's kind of how the pieces are slowly starting to connect to one another.
And, and with your additional, this is part, is this, is this new system of organizing. Workable because you have better staffing in your office. Cause remember we had someone about data and is this one of the roles or that? Like I'm glad to see if it is that we've hired someone and this is allowing us to be vastly more efficient.
Yeah. Having that financial analyst position, this is like essential. I mean, Kim's sitting right here now. Kim is promoted. But the, the financial analyst is really able to take our people that are experts in facilities. And build out systems like this and connect it to like the 15 year capital plan. So, yeah. Yeah. Ask any questions and then what the plan is right now is we'll go through every row. Kim's going to share her screen. I have a bunch of pieces of paper in front of me. This is the first time we're discussing it. You're seeing it. Some of this I just finished yesterday. As a team, Kim and I sat with Dr. Jones coming in and out, Dan in and out, other team members in and out for like seven hours straight. Organizing it into this view specifically, and we're going to go through each row. Focusing tonight on what has a 25 request specifically, then in the bottom is the stuff that doesn't, but is on our plan that we can kind of talk at a higher level about. We have the data, we'll share our screen and share it on Zoom. So when you ask me what is behind the 2 million at this time in 25. We, we can go through each one of those things. And then this is the first time you're seeing it. So ask questions. The 15 year plan then gets turned in, anything that has a 25 appropriation, we'll do a project sheet for. The nice thing is, is through this process is the project sheets will be more accurate and much easier to complete. Because we'll have gone through and discussed some things and really right now is our chance to, this is total first draft. Move around things, move things left, up, right, down. And as we get some more information. So I would say we'll ask a lot of questions. I think we're going to have a. A budget committee meeting in between. I know, you know, Cody, we already reached out and is interested in having a budget committee to go through the projects more in depth. And then we'll have, I think there's another capital, we have another summit in October. Don't we have another retreat in October where capital's on the agenda? And then the October 20th meeting. So we'll have a couple more meetings too, to go through everything.
So with, just a question. So for the budget meeting, will we have then the project sheets for the budget committee to look at? Is that what you're thinking? Just because I had mentioned, I had asked Tony about it. Cause I think it would be helpful for all of us to have them. More time with them is better, right? To allow us. So if you think that the budget committee gets them and then they'll get circulated to the board. So everybody has time to look at them before the next retreat or, you know, what are you thinking? Just kind of in terms of timeline on that.
Yeah. I think if it's in the specific for the, the, it might be worth having one or two budget committee. Meetings or having people take a look at the data we have now and see if there's anything that we want to fundamentally discuss based on how this conversation goes. And if not, then we'll just start mapping out all the project sheets and it could be one meeting or two meetings. Where we are doing a lot of edits, which we may want to do. And if kind of it's looking like we're not going to do a ton of them, then yeah, we'll start to just map it all out way earlier on the project sheets. The data that's before you now is in really good shape to turn into project sheets. So we can turn them around really quick.
Blaze, I'm going to ask something just to clear it up, probably won't clear it up, but we had certainly had a change in, in the need for municipal improvements as of late. Has that changed your thinking in, in putting your, your forward plan together as far as appropriating money for certain times? Cause I'll make it a twofold question. The second part of that question is for example, on Cardinal field improvements. You see back in 2028, 2029, you have $4.4 million. Now can we no longer, at what point are we appropriating money, which we need an MI for now? Versus what we didn't need an MI and could appropriate money? How do you, in your view, how do you address things like that?
Yeah, that's a good question and something we've actually been talking about quite a bit. It doesn't, it's not considered an appropriation until it's in the fiscal year that we're, they only, we only appropriate it one year at a time. So when we get to 25, that's when the question comes up, because that's when the funding gets appropriated. So the out years are fine. I did actually reach out so that we can coordinate with the guidance that the first selectman is going to give to all. Town departments on capital on this interpretation. And it, it comes up in a variety of ways to start thinking about, and I haven't fully digested it yet, because at what scale. Is something, do you anticipate that something needs an MI? So if you're thinking about like the JC entryway. And then some of our smaller, like we have a security one on here that we need to redesign one of the entryways a little bit for 300,000. It's hard to know exactly if that's going to need an MI at this point. And it's not something that we would like have design funds on first. I think the guidance at the moment, and I don't want to speak like officially on it, but I think the guidance is going to kind of be. Getting a refined understanding from planning and zoning on the definition of an MI. For all entities in town as part of this capital process. And it will then be. Focusing on the major capital projects for an MI and not getting too. Caught up on some of the smaller scale ones. I think one of the examples that we're going to use jointly with planning and zoning will be like the JC entryway. And trying to understand like the MI behind that.
That's a good one, because that's Thursday and we're going to have a meeting at 10 o'clock with planning and zoning. So I guess what will be, will be planning and zoning will determine whether an MI is necessary or not. And then we'll start the process with the first, with the selectmen's committee. And, and start the process then into bringing it back into planning and zoning after we get through this, the selection committee. So I guess the, we'll test the water on Thursday with that, but that's not really under your, at this point, it's under for us to figure out. So, okay. Thank you. That's great.
It's the one, it's one that we'll be watching closely to help us inform kind of the scale we're thinking about when we think about some of these smaller. But still, still significant projects.
So we'll, I'll keep you posted.
I'm by no means an expert on it.
Keep you posted how it goes on Thursday. Karen, you had a question?
I was jumping back a little. So because you're laying this out, you know, all of the regular maintenance that we needed for, you know, boilers and parking lots and windows and doors, you know, and so forth. Was all laid out in that 15 year master facility plan that we had gotten, you know, ages ago from KGND. And we've been told we have historically been underfunding our maintenance. Do you think that having it laid out like this where we have it, you know, a better grid that we can consistently keep our eye on? Will help us sort of stay on top of that and, and be able to focus on properly assigning, you know, funding for maintenance, you know, projects?
I'm, I'm hopeful that it will, yeah. Because we're basically taking the foundation, the KDNG report, which has tons of sub layers of data. That's our base at the end of the day. And it's turning that report, updating it to 2023 and really turning it into how the town appropriates capital. And I think by doing that, we can hopefully articulate our narrative in a way that really demonstrates. Each individual item and that every request for maintenance is driven by the data behind each program in a way that the town funds capital. So hopefully, yes.
Laura was next, if I may. Laura?
I just wanted to ask, there's 150,000 for Riverside. What does that include for them? Cause you know, they've been sort of waiting.
We're going through every row. So if we're ready.
These are all pre-questions. I think Christina has a pre-question.
And Joe, I've got one after too.
I just wanted to ask about the items that during the budget process last year, that some, what we call capital items. Got moved, you know, the BET's accounting system, wherever they get moved from capital to operating. But so can you just kind of talk about where those, like, like, cause we don't tend to think of those as our operating, right? Ours is our instructional. So where do those items, where are they? Are they here or are they in our operating budget now? You know, you know what I'm talking about. They were certainly painting. I'm just using as an example.
The ones that were moved and are in the operating budget, they're not on here.
Okay. So we've taken, we've now adjusted how we. You know, report them and then when budget guidelines come out, it'll be adjusted accordingly. Like in terms of percent, like when, you know, they're in, they get put back into last year's number.
Yeah. Every, every department in town is in a similar situation. We've had a changing, like a definition, or if it's based on the auditors, or if it's based on, you know, moving something from capital to operating. When I was at Parks and Rec, we also had like three or four programs moved into the operating budget. And then you're hopeful that the guidelines reflect that. Last year, so we've had, it's been multi-year, so, and it's part, part of it has to do with the auditors and part of it has to do with changing. Accounting rules too, on what's defined as capital. The, we've had, just so you know, I think over the years as a refresher, this, the annual security program. Tom Bobkowski's, you know, annual refresh, Mike Ting's, the annual IT infrastructure refresh. Painting fences and there's one more that I'm missing. Those have been moved into operating, so into the relevant budget. It's now in like security, it's now in IT and then it's in facilities.
Okay. Cody, do you have a pre-presentation question?
Yeah, I think, I thought Blaze mentioned it, but just thinking about where, from an efficiency standpoint, where we want to draw the lines between. Things that we can explore or dig into from a budget committee standpoint versus the broader group. I think I just wanted to flag that as, it's less of a question, more of a theme for everyone to think about. I imagine some of these might be, you know, smaller dollar items that require, you know, further study. And we kind of wanted to offer up the budget committee as a venue for us to kind of do the deep dive on some of the stuff that, you know, maybe doesn't. Isn't as interesting as the big issues. So the broader group can focus on the big issues. That's just Blaze and I talked a little bit about like where, where to, where, where the right places are to draw the line to make sure that, you know, the focus on, on either side is best utilized. But it's some, just something for the group to consider as we go through the list.
Thank you. I see no further questions, Blaze. You may begin.
Okay. I can read from back here. So I need a little bit of extra space here. So the, Kim, if you, Kim's going to share her screen and everything that we go through till we can, we can post online if it's not already online. But if we have questions, I'll be able to pull up kind of my notes here that we have behind each thing. Row number one, there's row numbers on each side. How this sheet works, there's row numbers on each side and so, because it's really long, I should have probably brought yardsticks for everybody. And it's grayed, it's grayed out. So if there was an appropriation last year, this is just for your reference in gray. You can just see if we just got money the prior year, we just included it for you to see in one spot. So ADA, the fiscal year request is to, at this moment is 2 million. The whole ADA program is a placeholder dollar amount number. And what we're doing right now, this is very placeholder, is in the summer, we put out an RFP in partnership with the first selectmen's advisory for committee with people with disabilities. And our facilities team, and we put out an RFP to do an ADA assessment of every single one of our facilities. Excluding Central Middle School and. Old Greenwich. Oh, and New Lebanon for now, right? Cause it's brand new. So prioritizing all the other schools, except those three that are in the most need. They are going through systematically, the award was issued to Silver Patricelli. Through a competitive bid process, they won the award. They are going through systematically and will give us recommendations, building by building. Prioritized for accessibility and ADA compliance. And then they will take that with us and turn that into a multi-year capital plan to get everything to a baseline ADA standard, building by building. This was something we heard a lot about in the last budget cycle, both from community and also from the town. Looking for like, what would it take to make buildings ADA compliant? And so we brought in the professionals and we've been really lucky to have good community partners. Unfortunately, I would say we're at least six weeks behind on that. I was hoping to have like the preliminary report in September. It's not going to be, but hopefully we'll have some, we'll definitely have information. Like as through this budget process, but when we'll have it, it's looking like it's more going to be October, which is not ideal for us here. But hopefully we can, in partnership with the town. Get that reflected into the budget and this cycle for us all to review. And that I think will be a, a very broad program. The way it was written too, we actually, Parks and Recreation did an addendum to the contract. And they're going to, they're doing the same thing when we're done. So theirs is also behind to do all of the parks facilities. But then we're using the same terminology and definitions for ADA compliance and accessibility. And we will hopefully have a program that we can, we can put together. So these are just purely on here to hold spots.
So is the $2 million to pay for the study or to pay for the improvements?
Though, those are placeholder numbers to pay for improvements. The study is already fully funded by existing ADA funds. It came in much less than we thought. And it's already, it's, it's going to be done by hopefully next month.
Thank you. And you guys, Karen?
I just know you mentioned briefly that they're looking at everything, but I think you said it was like two or three schools that we already had. So I just was wondering which schools, because I missed, I know you said it, I just missed it.
Yep. CMS getting replaced OG and then new lead because of how new it is.
Okay. And we don't need to do it at JC. That's what I'm asking.
No, we're doing it at JC.
Okay. Just checking.
But isn't JC accounted for based upon the work that we've already agreed and was appropriated for last year with respect to the elevator and stuff?
JC is, so this is, the scope of this audit is from the sidewalk and parking lot into the heart of the classroom. And so we're doing, Julian Curtis will be done still as a building. But hopefully some of the items are already being addressed, like the entryway, the elevator. And that'll be kind of true across the board, because we're already doing projects. So hopefully some of them are already also being addressed.
That was what I was specifically looking to ask, because, because, because I hadn't heard you say JC and maybe I, I thought I misheard. Because I know we were already addressing it. So they're going to show us what we may not have already got, what may not be part of the project that's already been funded.
Yeah, like is, is every bathroom door.
And doorknob and, yeah, yeah. Perfect.
So they're going to come up with a, a plan. And then this $2 million number is basically a filler. So why do we think, what gives us any education around the $2 million that you have as a filler here?
Nothing. Really nothing. Yeah. I would say, we, we took, we took all the ADA data prior that we've had here and just deleted it. Because it's, was kind of irrelevant to the current day-to-day situation of our school. This, at this moment right here is the first draft. I am hoping for when we look at this the next time, that we will be able to ask David Stein from Silver Patricelli. What is even like a reasonable number that we can use?
So on that point though, so they're coming up with a, basically a, a plan. Is it a, a 15 year plan to coincide with our 15 year plan? And then how are they deciding how to allocate it? On what priority basis are they saying you should do this first, this second, this third? How, how are they determining, making that determination?
They have, and the reason this is taking longer is because they actually have a person who's an expert in this field. And this is all she does for their firm and has done it at a bunch of other locations. And so they're, the way that they're going to prioritize it, they're going to prioritize for us. Like what's out of compliance with, with ADA, just to start with, versus what's like a best practice. We're only focusing to, the scope of it is only on the physical infrastructure. It's not on other functions related to accessibility, like programming, programming or anything outside of the physical infrastructure of the building. And they have a ranking system that's based on some industry standard. And. The primary piece of it will be. Starting with ADA compliance, like what is just not compliant with the law to start with.
So if they're getting this, us that proposal in roughly six weeks, don't we vote on this before six weeks? So how will we know what that number should be for purposes of this capital budget?
For this capital budget, I am thinking two things. One, hopefully we will get before October, a number that would even be like a reasonable number that we should put in as a placeholder. We will, we will not have good numbers to put in for the Board of Ed, I don't think, by the time you vote on this. What I'm hoping is that since we've already engaged town in this process from the beginning too, is that when we get the report. We can work with the, the, even though you're submitting in, in October, we're submitting just to the first selectmen's office. And so hopefully we can work with the town to then further refine the very specific request. Because it doesn't actually go like to the BET, for example, until after it's presented in January. And so hopefully we'll be there and then if not, we'll just have to, to. we'll be there. And then if not, we'll just have to, to present it and, and see kind of how it'll be information for every, all the boards to share.
I was gonna say, maybe our chair can have a discussion to make sure that that, you know, the timing works for our, our other town bodies. Cause I think we've all learned the hard way, putting in a random placeholder does not tend to work well for us.
Yeah.
You might just mention too, because we do have the study for Western. This, this dollar amount you could attribute to Western and it would be gone in a fast minute. You know, with the ADA study.
Yeah, Western Middle, so I got a lot of reports in my head. Western Middle School, we already did an ADA study on Silver Petricelli also won the award, did that study. And I believe their cost estimate for Western Middle School came in at around five million. Now, it's really, really dependent because Silver Petricelli also had showed us, they've done this for other municipalities and I think it was South Windsor. You know, their whole program was like, was less than five million to do all their buildings. So it really is going to be real, it's really, really variable. And we'll just have to make that really clear. And maybe we'll, it's better to have it be a higher number. So maybe we'll put in a higher placeholder. Hopefully they could give us, if within the next couple of weeks, they can at least say that they've had someone in every single school and engineer and what, what are they starting to see? We can.
So, so does, so I know you gave us three schools that it didn't include. So if they've already done, so now it's also Western, it's not included in this.
Yeah, Western's already done. Yeah.
Um, just a question on a understanding of our standards and the towns, are they aligned for ADA compliance? I mean, are I just wondered if we were in alignment with what the town would say we had to do versus what we believe we need to do.
Yeah, I think that's, I think the direction we're heading in is, is in that direction. And specifically on ADA, something that a lot of the town departments were all coordinated on are talking about, like I, I've talked with Amy Seabert, Joseph Sliano, Ben Branian and members from Town Finance. And we're talking about how can we come up with a townwide approach to ADA so that we're all on the same page, we're sharing same terminology and software. So I, I do think that's the direction we're largely heading in. Yeah.
I think too, part of the discussion is the, the difference between compliant, being compliant and being accessible. And we really have been more focused on accessibility. Like if we have a building that doesn't have an elevator and you know, kids can't get up and down the stairs. Where at OG, for instance, with the OCR, we're talking about compliance. And that came from OCR. So they're two, they have two different costs and, and they're very different. If we were bringing everything up to compliance, like in our older building, like at JC, you'd have to have at least one classroom on every grade level has to be accessible, you know, sync and, and be dealing with that inside the classroom. That's not, that's not showing up anywhere right now from a compliance standpoint, but we are getting an elevator to help it be more accessible and front entrance.
So a lot more information to come on that one. Okay, uh, this, uh, next one is ADA or is the administration building renovation? So this is something that's been on our 15 year plan for a while, sitting out there in the out years. Um, I would say it's mostly out there. At this point, I would have no concept really. This was from the KDG report. I would say it's mostly out there to keep the conversation going about the future of this building. The fiscal year 25 request is specific to issues that need to happen here. Really, if we're going to be staying here for any short period of time, which are the windows behind you. The, you know that from the flood, we had the two windows at the top are broken. They're still boarded up. And really all of these windows behind you on the, the floors need to be replaced. Uh, the two windows up top up there are already cracked behind the curtain. They're very expensive. Uh, that's old glass and it's curved. And so we would, we did get a quote, everything that we're talking about. We got a quote to the same installer that put the remaining windows in that are not single pane, uh, not custom, you know, curved would be going in back here. And the frame inside the frame I'm advised is actually rotting apart. And there's parts of window frames that you can just kind of pick apart with your finger. And so that's the specific request for the 300,000. And the rest of that is out there more for a conversation with the committee that's currently reviewing this building. Just that if we do end up staying here, uh, at some point, a renovation would need to be made versus, versus not. That's all that is.
Well, Blaze, let, let's talk about the 300 grand that we, for 24, 25. We made a request, what do we do? 175,000 for the trust, the Havemeyer Trust. And we're waiting for the, uh, the judge to make a ruling on that. He's having a hearing on that, the probate judge uh, in a couple of weeks. So we'll see if we get that 170, what? That's Tuesday.
Coming up Tuesday.
Oh, good. Okay. So Tuesday. So I spoke to the probate judge and it should all be fine. We're waiting for Tuesday to, uh, uh, come about. Now, uh, if he does allocate that $175,000 for other costs, uh, there is no reason in the world that why we can't ask for this 300, uh, from the trust. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yep.
So once we get the 175, then we will immediately take this 300, make the same request we did for 175 for other things. And, and then if we do get approved from the trust, then we could take it off this sheet, couldn't we?
That would be direction I'd be looking for you and I, but I think that we have a similar thought process internally that we could do as part of this process.
Good. So once we get the 175, we'll draft the same request to the 300 because we have another, I believe it's $550,000 or so in the trust. Uh, which if we change the use of this building from an educational building to another type of building, that trust must be returned to the Havemeyer family. So we should look to use the money rather than letting it sit because we haven't drawn from that Havemeyer trust for 10 years now.
Um, what's in the, how much is in the Havemeyer trust?
Well, there's a, if we get
600,000.
If we get the 175 that we've requested, there'll be about 550,000 left. If we get the 300,000, then we'll have another 200, was it 250 left? So, yeah, yeah. Laura?
Who manages the trust and has it been managed at all to maximize our?
Uh, it has not been managed and it, it has not been brought to our attention that it even existed. We found out that it existed in our, our committee. Right, Christina, that myself and Christina both work on. Yeah, but not the access of it. There, there was rumor and story of it existing. Well, it, I, I could say safely say it has not, to answer specifically your questions. I, I don't believe it's been managed in any way, shape or form. It's existed. Uh, nobody decided that, to let us know that we can access it. The trustee, uh, we, we hunted down and found the trustee and asked him about accessing it. And we found out how to do that. Blaze was nice enough to fill out the forms necessary to do that. And then, uh, we submitted them and we're waiting for the probate judge now to allocate the money.
Who is the trustee?
Do you remember his name?
Uh, I think they did submit a resignation to the judge as part of this, but the I, I'm blanking on it. I have the paperwork.
We know, we have all the information. I'll share it with you offline. Uh, yes, yes. I will share that information offline. Yes.
Seeing as how we haven't drawn down from it in quite some time, I'm just curious, because this is the first I'm hearing that we've made a request to draw down from that. Who makes the determination to, you, you, who made the determination to draw down from the trust? And what was the request for? Just because this is the first I'm hearing of it.
The, uh, the decision was made by, we, we understood what the trust is and what the trust could pay for. Uh, we made a decision based on, uh, on the requirements that the trust needed, uh, to draw down on it. We drafted a letter uh, based on the certain needs and we made that request.
Wait a sec. What, what were those needs and who was the we that made the decision? Because it didn't come to the board. So this is the first I'm hearing. That's why I'm wondering.
That's a good question.
Because I don't know what the stipulations are.
I'll, if, if we don't mind, I'll circulate the actual application, uh, to everybody. I do think that after, this has been going on, I think it was since like, what, April, when we started the paperwork to see if this would work. And we'll find out next Tuesday. I do actually still think this is not, it's not like it's done. So once we get the funding, I think then we're all going to have to actually get an appropriation to access the funds. So we'll actually have to still do um, an appropriation. It's not like the funding is coming directly to an account at the Board of Ed.
That's why I'm saying we should talked about it. Was this reimbursement for what we had to do? It was really like in connection with the damage to the building. It wasn't.
Only, only a piece of it.
Only a piece of it.
Other parts of it are like improving air conditioning in the building and other needed maintenance items that we didn't have funding for. Well, I'll still circulate, I'll, I'll circulate the application, everybody, and we can take a look at.
We can talk about this offline. I, I'd love to have an understanding because if we haven't drawn down from it in a while and there's money there and it hasn't been managed, as Laura was saying, it's something that we could be instead of drawing down for, we could be having it managed to be making money. And it is, was a gift specifically meant and only tied to this building. So I'm wondering if it, how that process works, because it shouldn't have to go through the town. It is specifically tied to us. So I'm just, it's something we can have a discussion off offline. We don't have to talk about now, but I'm just trying to figure out because
I'll talk to you about it.
Yeah, we can. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to understand the same thing because I would assume there's a process by which we undertook and did we have to retain counsel in order to put this application before a judge? And how would that counsel? Yeah, who's compensating the counsel?
Now, we just submitted a request to the trustee and then the trustee is a law firm and the trustee submits the request to the judge. And there's a public hearing on Tuesday, technically at the judge's office here at Town Hall, right? The probate judge.
Judge Hopper, yep. Judge Hopper, yep.
We're kind of learning as we go at the moment, but um, I'll share the application and then I think we could maybe have a separate meeting to talk through.
Yeah.
As far as the trust goes, as far as keeping the trust in place, uh, if the, uh, if the use of this building is changed from educational use to a different use, then that trust money goes to the descendants of the Havemeyer family. It, we lose that money.
Oh, no, I know. I have the whole, I have the trust document, the initials, but, you know, but nobody knew who was managing it for a while. So, yeah.
We found all.
Yes, I know.
And clearly not very well, if there's only like $600,000.
We don't know what it started with. It all depends on what you start with. Could have started with $3. We don't know, but yes.
Okay.
Move on.
Uh, okay, Cardinal Field Improvement. So this here is basically, we kind of talked about this at the Budget Committee the other day. Any, this, this overall program is putting everything that's related to Cardinal Stadium at GHS in one item. And there's a couple of kind of decision points. Uh, oh, we have them up on the screen here if you want to zoom in a little bit, but there's a couple of decision points that we'll kind of have to start talking about, like phase two versus starting to do some needed uh, maintenance items. In fiscal year 25, we're just prioritizing specifically the resurfacing of the existing surface, which we are advised by Weston and Sampson. Um, and I have the email, I'll circulate it with everybody, the engineers that did the, the report on it to give us an updated number. Um, that's about 173,000 in right now, if we did it right now. Um, and that's like the bare minimum per square foot cost plus some soft cost. And, uh, that was last done, um, in 2014. So about nine years ago, and it's passed the end of its seven year lifecycle. And we went through the condition, uh, report last year. And then we also got a, a separate report while Weston and Sampson was out there. Actually, why don't we just circulate that too? While Weston and Sampson was out there, they also noted some safety concerns about the overall facility. And so they put together kind of a multi-year uh, plan. This is extremely, uh, draft, uh, right now, but I just kind of using it as my rough framework. And we're prioritizing here in 25, uh, padding for lane eight. So lane eight is the lane, is the outermost lane. It's only the one where the stadium is. And what they're advising is that, uh, there's a, the stadium is too close to lane eight. It's within a fall zone for someone getting hit, especially if they were doing, uh, if they were hurdling. Once you go there, you kind of can really see what they're talking about. They had also cited two other things, which were two fence posts that were on each side of lane eight. Uh, facilities has already gone and removed those. The lane, the, the whole fence was also told to us actually by Weston and Sampson that it really, just in general, is too close to the overall track. Um, and that the curbing, if you're looking at the track, the concrete curbing is also too close to the outermost lane. And they gave us kind of a prioritized list. Um, if you talk to Pete right now, he is, he just, for this year, lane eight is closed. So they're just not using lane eight, which during hurdling, because it's too close to the track. What they advise doing for now, um, which is this request is the most important thing is putting padding along the front of the outdoor padding along the front of the stadium bleachers. And then thinking about what our longer term strategy is for the overall property, are you expanding? Are you going to do other things? Uh, because that'll impact maybe realigning the fence. Uh, the fence has been this way just for a long time. And actually the stadium was built on the fence line of the old track. So that's where the fence used to be. So this was something that Weston and Sampson kind of brought out to us in a report. And then we had them cost out the most prioritized items and those are, are mostly up there. In the out years, there's some other items that we kind of can discuss as a board, like what is our vision for Cardinal Stadium at the high school? There is a request, uh, from both, uh, like athletics, from some users and from even like IT would support bringing networking, trenching networking directly out to the stadium to improve connectivity out there. The, uh, we're going to need to potentially rebuild. We have a, a estimate here from, uh, Hinding to start rebuilding the tennis courts. Uh, because the tennis court surfaces, the subsurfaces will eventually need to get rebuilt. But at the same time, the question, and that, that's an old number, that's from KDNG still at the moment, but what are we going to kind of do about, uh, phase two? And primarily the, the road, the access road and the bridge, because that road would require us to move a number of things anyways, like part of the tennis court. Uh, and we would be doing extensive trenching, which would kind of relate to some of these other things that we're talking about. And then realistically, do we want to ever expand the size of the track or realign, um, you know, the outer visitors bleachers and start kind of thinking about how those all talk to one another? Uh, so that vision for Cardinal will, will be kind of important, but at the moment, uh, the immediate request for this year fiscal year 25 is to put the padding um, and move piece of the fencing and then do the track resurfacing of the existing track. If we're thinking about realistically about how long some of these decisions might, might take. Uh, no, that's alls we're asking for in 25 is just the 325,000. It's, uh, taking, um, this is the safety concerns that Weston and Sampson identified in general and how much it might cost to resolve each one individually. So that, that's what this is. No, what's, alls we're asking for in 25 specifically is relocating the 45,000 for relocating that concrete curb and fencing. And the, uh, padding at the grandstands, that's about the 100,000. And then the 225 is the resurfacing of the existing surface right now. That's it for the 25.
So at what point do we need to kind of have these come? Uh, you, these are all a lot of things. This is a lot of interesting information. Like, is this the kind of thing we need to decide this year? Next year? I know, you know, we can always change the long-term plan, but you know, kind of what's helpful in terms of planning? Like if we say we're never going to do phase two, I'm just, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying if we say that, that's a big number in here. So like, at what point do we have that discussion or do we wait till it comes up in five years? Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm just asking the question.
I, I think it, we're not going to have the same board by the time that item is sitting in front of people. And so, and you can't really make decisions for, uh, future boards. So you could spend three hours debating it. But I'm not sure that it would be really helpful. I mean, we've shown it in the out year and when, and as we get ready to get closer to those out years, whoever's sitting in your seats is going to have to have those really, you know, challenging conversations. That would be my advice.
On that, on that same topic, uh, there are board members that will carry on, uh, for a few years and those that are, uh, will carry on for even more who are running now, who will be, uh, of course, reelected. But, uh, uh, what I'll do is whatever knowledge. But what I'll do is whatever knowledge I have, I'll share with you guys before I step down, because there's a lot of information I'll just pass on to you guys offline.
The only point that I that I might add would be that sending some signaling might be helpful, though, for other for other entities. And I don't, I don't think it's right now to Dr. Jones's point, but we do need probably sooner than what we would do to rebuild the tennis courts, for example. And you're you're not, you might extend the life of those extent, those courts a little bit longer if you knew you were going to really try to commit to Phase Two versus if you knew you were going to rip them out, or there was even a chance you were going to rip them out. And I'll circulate this too. This is just to do for the courts. So we have two of these. There's eight. So each one's about 400,000. The, you know, are you going to rebuild the court? Are you the carpet of Cardinal Field is on here to get replaced? And we're going to need to replace that carpet when the warranty is up. And so we'll be coming up sooner for carpet replacement. But you might not replace the carpet as is if you are going to expand the track, because it's going to have to be moved. So I think there's two pieces of it. Some of it is going to be a longer term thinking, and you're not going to decide right now, but some of it is going to kind of be like, what's the high level vision of the place? I don't think you make that now, but but you do. You do start to think through some of that. Okay, so next one is ceilings and lighting. We spent a lot of time going through this program. And and Kim, while I'm talking, you can go to the to the next one. Our fiscal year 25 request is specific to three schools, COSCOB, some ceiling repairs in one of the wings, about 227,000. GHS, the science wing of the building is due for ceiling replacement. We went through all these with Dan and his team very extensively. And then Hamilton Avenue, replacing the existing lighting fixtures throughout the building. A separate in 26, it's a big number continuing to move along at GHS with ceilings and going through systematically piece by piece. And then it looks like, are we double counting on Hamilton Avenue, two years? Or those two separate projects? Flag that for a note with Dan. Peace. Yeah. And the more we go through each one, and this is too good if any BET members are listening to, we really are, you'll see why. One of the reasons we're comparing, like, I have a note on for myself really on this 15-year plan to look at the comparison each time is because we really are systematically, as we merge a couple of these documents and over the years, like KDNG has kind of been morphed into this other 15-year plan. We are really trying to make an effort to go through and systematically reduce like any double counting or any items that would be funded by like a major project in an earlier year, you're taking out. And we're we're keeping note of that. And so hopefully everyone will start to see lots of shifts. And so we will. That's a good one.
Okay, so every year I ask the same question. The district, you're referring to just in general across the entire district, and then you have specific Greenwich High School and Half Meyer, I'm sorry, Hamilton Avenue and ISD. And so the district would be every other school but that from a collective standpoint.
No, district are funds that can be used district-wide and are either targeted at like a systematic item that is going to be at every school, like if you're buying a building management control system that you're going to place in every school. Or it's funding to support like supplemental items that you don't have a specific project for, but you know annually come up every year. Now, that one specifically, for example, that looks like another error that we're going to have to go through and correct piece by piece. And that's kind of what we're working on. That's why we were sitting together for for hours yesterday, going through every one of these rows once we got it in this format. So that looks like hopefully either it's not labeled as district properly, and we have to look back at the other KDG reports, sub items, and then Dan's notes to see what that was. Or it would come out. Hopefully, the next time we meet.
So the other question I have is, Hamilton Avenue is not that old. So 1.3 million to replace the fixtures with LED seems very expensive for a school that's relatively not that old. But Karen's correcting me and saying it's older than I think it is. So how old is it? And when was the last time we played, replaced, like?
Over 15 years. Yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, the building itself is older. When we rented, when we went in to do the remediation, I don't, I I I don't, it wasn't, I don't know if they redid everything. They may not have redone all of the lighting, and I don't, I don't remember. I just know that that was completed over 15 years ago, because 15 years ago, we opened the renovated Glenville, and this was Hamilton Avenue was before that. So and I don't know if we changed into LED at that time.
Okay.
I'll need to follow up. I'll get.
And obviously, the LED lights are more expensive, and the switch over to them is because they have a longer lasting lifespan. So what is the expectation of the length of a LED light?
Yeah, it's much longer than the the other lights that were installed. The other, you bring up another good point too, with the LEDs, and this is something that we're trying to work on with Town Finance right now, is we've also done projects through financing it through the like EverSource funding programs. And you get incentive towards some of these projects. We end up paying the the loan back on the electric bill, which puts, which comes out of our operating budget. And, you know, it's like a million dollars or something that we're paying in addition to the electric bill, and it comes off the electric line. And so something we're talking to the auditors about, and something I've reached out to Roland about, is if we say we could get like 40% of that back of that million dollars back in cash to the developer. And then the rest of it, we could finance at a 0% five-year loan. Can we pay that financed loan out of capital that we would have paid for a larger project to do anyways? How does that work with audit? And how does that work for like accounting? That's a question that we've raised with Town Finance, because that would give us a lot more flexibility. Because when we do it through the EverSource Financing Program, which is great, but then it puts more, it keeps putting the pressure, you're financing all of that actually through your operating budget. So I will specifically follow up with with the Hamilton Avenue, though.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay, Central Middle School Expansion Renovation, we had appropriated 67.5 million. I I I need to look back. Laura already put on my point on my notes to take a look, and I have my let me just pass out my, this is what we went through with the Building Committee the other day. So yeah, I don't know if you've heard of this project yet, but alls alls this is, we know that there's inflation, I think, at 365 a month. Okay, so the Building Committee submitted an interim. I don't know how much we need to talk about this right now, but alls right now, it's it's on here really just to keep the conversation as part of capital. Because I'm not recommending approach here. What the two physical options are, are funding the it through an interim appropriation request, which is what the Building Committee has asked the board to do already as a vote. Which would be the 42 million, you know, 16,961, that was the interim request. The only other option, funding mechanism is the CIP process in which it would be funded like on a July one appropriation. That's the only, this is just the two mechanical options. It's in here kind of at the request so that it stays as part of our capital. If we decide to do an interim, which is what the Building Committee requested the board do, then it would come off of this. And it would be a different number. It'd be the lower number that the Building Committee presented here based on their estimates from Turner. And and Laura will will know this much better than I, but the number two is just in context of what we discussed last year as part of capital. The number from the Building Committee is all-inclusive of the field, which was previously in the capital version, it was in the out years in the capital plan, and it also includes FFNE. And I can, the furniture, fixtures and equipment, and the Building Committee Chair confirmed that back to me very helpfully the other day. And so that's just helpful context to have for what we're discussing. We had them at separate, we had, and and the numbers were really not they're going to be placeholder numbers at the time, but we had like 5 million at time of submission, when there was no design or anything. And then the field, it was like 2.67 million in the in the out year. But you'll probably have a lot of discussion on this item. So you want me to?
We there's a varying level of being up to speed on this this topic. So if those that have not been really paying attention, as others have, certainly can ask questions now. And or we can wait till another discussion, certainly up to you guys. What do you need to ask any questions? You're going to answer questions.
I was going to offer some helpful information.
Welcome to that, Laura.
So I know that we talked quite a bit about it the last meeting. When we did our value engineering exercise for the building, one of the options the architect had presented in the event that there was interest in seeing how much each classroom added to the full the full budget was about 295,000 per classroom. And the auditorium was in the neighborhood of 650 or so. If we had voted to shrink it, we wouldn't have saved very much money. And if we had voted to cut classrooms, we also wouldn't be saving very much money. The 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 price tag of this building is unfortunately really driven by the escalation in the construction industry and what we're seeing, not just here in Greenwich, but literally everywhere. So I just wanted to make that point.
Okay, anyone have specific questions they'd like to ask to anyone, not just Blaze, but to anyone else on this topic?
For anyone who had specific line item questions.
But I'm not going to deny anybody.
No, but I think Tony might have more than Blaze.
He'd be much better than me.
Of course. All right.
Well, Laura, it'll actually.
Hearing, hearing no questions. Shall we move on? Please. Okay.
Okay, next one is drainage. This was a new program that we had put on last year to start capturing, you know, some of these things that we're talking about. Drain, we're responsible for all of the drainage infrastructure on our property. And any capital item related to that. So our request this year, the 250 is now up to 2025. And what we're, what we've done is prioritize all of our schools into a multi-year plan, starting with ones that have either had issues known to facilities or have some flooding slow drainage problems that we we loosely know about. The goal here is to, we, I would say, we really have no concept of what the infrastructure kind of looks like underground at some of these locations in terms of like drainage and then separately sewer, which we're also responsible for. And so here we're talking about hammering the lines. And then some funding for emergency repairs if we find something that's critical. And then it's doing the same thing. It'll be systematically like year after year, kind of cammering the schools based on a priority that facilities put together. And hopefully finding out and seeing what the heck is is going on under there.
So this is basically money down the drain.
Literally.
Okay, dad jokes always strong. Any questions on the money down the drain? Nope. Okay, shall we move on?
Okay, yeah, that's a fairly straightforward one. Okay, emergency lighting too is another program that we have as a town and a board really been, I think, investing in. And in fiscal year 25, it's it's one of the the main items to kind of wrap up this initial program that that Dan's been working on. And it's for Parkway School, and it's to replace the emergency lighting system. And then all of like the egress lights and exit lights and pretty much anything related to emergency lighting. And then 25,000 there for as we do the annual farm marshal inspections, if we find something critical to fix it at the moment.
Questions? Move on, please.
Okay, the next one is equipment. This is like trades and custodial equipment. This is another program that we've been working on refining. And fiscal year 25, what we're doing with facilities too, just to to point out, part of this would be like a hybrid program. We're going through, you'll see like district. What we're just starting to do is go through like all of the Zamboni floor machines, spraying machines, some of the larger custodial equipment, tag the years, come up with a replacement lifecycle. We know some of them. And so the first year is 30,000 to get the worst of those replaced. This is like the capital equipment and the floor machines. And then we have a scissor lift for 40,000 that is due for replacement.
Questions? Hearing none?
You'll see too, the program, I'm going to move on, but hopefully on some of these programs still, you'll start to see a concept that I've learned here in Greenwich, like stable predictable increases or requests on some of these different line items. And so as we get some of this data, we'll be able to streamline that. The next one is exterior concrete masonry, and we're looking at COSCOB 44,000, that's to do exterior painting of, I believe that was like mostly all the trim on the building. Glenville, 193,000, there's front step repairs that need to be made. 25, we also have North Street, 35,000, that's the loading dock. And I have a note there because we're checking on something with Finocchio. That's where our garbage also gets loaded and unloaded. So we have to coordinate with them what we're there's a way to make a little improvement back there. And then Old Greenwich, 102,000 for, and this is, I believe, unrelated to what the major project renovation will entail. We did have Dan, and I did coordinate that request with the Building Committee.
Questions? Let's move on.
The next one is flooring, and this is, this is not maintenance of the flooring, just to be clear for this capital program. This is like a capital swap out, because there was some talk about potentially moving this program also to operating. But this is, you know, going in for 25 at North Myanis, replacing a full wing of the building. I don't know the wing, which one it is off the top of my head right now, but we can get that for you. North Street, 91,000, replace the existing floor covering. And we also have another one at North Street for the Media Center carpet. And I would say here that Dan and facilities does does have really good notes on all of these times and when all of these items and when they're going to kind of get replaced. And more of what you're kind of looking at, what we're doing for these elements is just putting them into this format. But we, he does have some really good information on, and Kim knows it because she's been going through like 1,000 pages with Dan to on what's needed for that request.
Questions? Move on, please.
Okay, furnishings is, this is.
Can I just, can I just ask one, one quick thing? Just Blaze, just a general matter on any of these. Can you flag if you think it's a like, we have point, we have numbers for each one of these, but I'd just be interested if there's any that you know, you think there's like a much wider range of outcomes, you know, versus like, oh, it's all going to be plus or minus. But if there's anywhere you say like, hey, this this one here has a much higher degree of uncertainty. To the extent, you know, on any of these, you could flag that. That's great.
Yeah, I I think I can definitely do that. Actually, this would be one of those programs, I think, where like we have good numbers on something versus either like placeholder or variable numbers or I think we can go through that. And I'll try to point that out here. Like, this one is actually more of a program that is relatively. And I'll try to point that out here, like this one is actually more of a uh program that is relatively new, if I could say it, or should I guess not new. I guess Dr. Jones is, you've been working on this for a while. So we're we're.
It's the classroom furniture at the high school and we started in twenty eighteen nineteen and did about a third of the building. Um, we've had it in our capital budget the last couple of years and have not been able to fund um the remaining furniture. So we have the rest of the building that is still needing the updated furniture. And so we actually, I think Blaze tried to smooth it out a little bit instead of asking for the larger requests.
Yeah, so to to Cody's point, actually, Dr. Jones had gotten an estimate to finish out the remaining uh furniture upgrade at the high school and it was uh around a million uh dollars. We slightly adjusted the scope. And then uh that that funding has not been tolerable and uh to it hasn't it hasn't gone through in that form of a request. So as we're prioritizing what we're asking for, this year we broke it up into multi-year smaller buckets. And it would be three, it it would be three years to phase in the rest of the high school. Then to signal our prioritization, we kind of a large gap in there that was put in last year. Um, and there's out years to go systematically through each building and do that as well. But those are kind of in the out years. Those are very much like a placeholder number based on an estimate that we had of like a perk classroom replacement and the number of classrooms. Um, but the the focus here would be uh finishing out the high school and hopefully a funding model that is uh more stable and tolerable to to everybody in turn while we prioritize the number of items.
No questions? Move on, please.
Okay, next one is uh Hamilton Avenue HVAC replacement. So this is on here right now. Um, and I think at some point throughout this process over the next month or two, we'll discuss if we're we're gonna need to do this as an interim uh funding request or as part of capital. The Hamilton Avenue uh geothermal system, you'll recall last year, we asked for uh two point one million dollars or so um to either fix or replace the system because we know it's not working. Um, the the through the budget process, the town did remove the funding. But we were told that once we find out more information, that depending on what it was, we could come back for an interim funding request. Um, it's taken us a long time to find the right person to look at the geothermal system. Where we're at right now for Hamilton Avenue, there's three major data points for everybody to to know what's going on. One, we've engaged a um expert from Colorado in geothermal system. Uh, this is like the fourth vendor to come and take out a look at it, but we we found a vendor through a partnership with the Energy Management Advisory Committee. Um, they connected us with another firm that the town's been using. They looked at it. It was out of their wheelhouse. They and they then connected us with this person from Colorado. I think the company's called Farnsworth. Um, he was just out here like three weeks ago, going through the whole system. He's working on, can we restore the geothermal? And if we can, and it's worth it, this is what it will look like. Separately, we have Lero, which is a engineering firm for traditional system. They're building out a pricing option for getting rid of geothermal and putting in one of our traditional systems um at Hamilton Avenue School. So I'm anticipating um and Dan's been working really hard on this, that we will have a a really good uh choice to make um both us as a board and the town between two really competent engineering firms going through, giving us two different options or maybe the same option if if Farnsworth says, you know, this thing's not worth fixing at this point, um but we'll really have a good understanding of where we're at. The the system this summer did reach kind of a point in its current state of no return. And we are, the temperature in the building was regularly uh exceeding eighty six degrees, um even with the system fully up and running. And what what's happening is the geothermal system we've learned at least was o- is overheated. And so the cooling capacity doesn't really exist. The supplemental system of the building is being run like it's the primary system of the building. Uh, it's not capable at this point of cooling the building. So we actually brought, had to bring in a temporary cooling full-size building unit that's there uh right now. We got a variance from the town on the noise permit. And it operates kind of like a generator and it cools the whole building. Um, and so we're we're running that temporarily right now uh and renting it on a month-to-month basis. It had like a forty thousand dollar upstart charge to get it installed. And it's around twenty thousand dollars a month to keep it running there. Um, and so that would be kind of part of this request as well. Actually, we reached out to the town, uh let them know what happened, that, you know, we had this problem where the system kind of failed and we wouldn't be able to start school with the temperatures that were in the building. And so we are setting up like a separate code so we can track all the expenses related to to what happened and it's kind of, we'll hopefully have some good information soon on which pro- which way to go forward. And they'll also give us a timing on, can we fund this um through capital appropriation? Or with the timing of it, do we need to go in for an interim? So maybe we could fix it before the next school year starts.
Karen, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, uh, are we, do we really, I mean, I guess we're gonna get an actual estimate on on different cost options to fix this because I was gonna say. Do we really want to wait to have to fund this and do work until next summer if it's twenty thousand, we've already paid the forty to to install and it's twenty thousand dollars a month. That's just like.
Our our thinking right now is that we will.
Freezing money out the window, throwing it out the window. I was trying to go with the dad joke.
Trying, I'm trying.
I'm trying, but I'm a mom, so the mom jokes kind of felt like.
The uh, the, I think what we're gonna do is once we get the better information from the two engineering firms, um, we're anticipating that we're likely and we're likely gonna need to do this as an interim uh because so that we could for the exact reason you just said, because the funding appropriation doesn't happen until next summer. We'd want to do the work next summer, but we don't. We don't know, so it's here right now until we get these two reports. Hopefully within the next month, we'll have both reports. The geothermal report is taking much longer than than we thought. It took a long time to get the right people out here to look at it, but unfortunately the timing is what the timing is.
Well, we won't need the uh air conditioning equipment in the wintertime, will we? So uh uh we have the forty thousand set up. Well, they need it for a month or two, then shut it down and then make decisions in the uh uh in the spring, whether we need to get the equipment back or not. So that we have, but we'll get decisions uh prior to uh prior to that happening. Yes.
But this isn't, has no impact on the heating system. We're only having issues with the cooling system, correct?
I I can't answer that.
We don't, we do not know, so we, we do not know. Haven't turned.
No, no, it's not that we don't know, it's that I don't know. And I don't feel confident speaking to.
Okay, that's fine. So that was the way, there were two questions. The heat, heat was, you know, one thing. The other part is, where um, how were we able to fund the forty thousand dollars plus the twenty thousand a month? Are we gonna have to do an interim for that amount regardless of which direction we go?
Yeah, I mean, it was an emergency solution.
No, no, it's fine. I just, just to understand.
And I and I will just say, here's what Dan had shared with me because I asked that same question early on about uh the the heat and now things can change, but he said we should be fine with the heat. And part of the discussion was and probably turn the unit off. But instead of having to pay forty thousand dollars to bring it back in the spring, because it absolutely would have to be back brought back in the spring, even if we have the funding, um simply because you're gonna have to have air to get through the end of the school year. Um, and but what they may do is actually leave it on site, cover it up um and working out with the company because it's also cheaper for the company to just leave it there, cover it and turn it off. So we wouldn't have to pay the forty thousand again. But again, that's, he was working with the company on that.
Okay, hearing no more questions, uh, let's move on.
Okay, parking garage. Just got this yesterday, so you could take a look at it. You'll you'll be as much of an expert in it as me at this point, but at least we have some numbers, like we're trying to get rid of placeholder uh things, you know, as we've all discussed. Um, there's three options in the back of this report uh in here right now, currently in the dollars before you is option A. The uh just one thing to note when you're looking at the cost estimate, um the costs in the back do not include any engineering or architectural services. These are the cost estimates of the construction. So the estimate up there is you can see we added the two fifty plus the one point nine five million because we have to do some of our own A and E and construction documents for bid. So in here, you'll see the number one point nine five million, option A on page nineteen. Um, but I think as a group, over the next few weeks, we'll digest this report that we just got yesterday. So um, I believe that though the one takeaway at the moment is that it is in need of repair. Uh, but it's not, there's no, they didn't find like a critical life safety concern where the garage needs to be closed like right now so that we can't use it tomorrow. But there's some items that both should be fixed in the short term and then other items that will significantly extend the life, uh the useful life of the garage.
Blaze, do you know the age of this building? Garage is, you know.
Not off the top of my head, no.
That's okay, I just.
I I will.
I assumed it was built when we fifteen years ago when we did the improvements on Hamilton Avenue. And I guess the expect.
It was, it was there before that. Yeah, it was definitely there before the building was renovated. It was remediated and renovated because there was found black mold in the walls.
Sixteen years old.
Sixteen years old.
And it had been closed at some point in that window of time because there were cracks and other issues, so they've had to do repairs on it.
Why ask the question? Because obviously it is a building, a parking garage should last longer than sixteen years without a two point two million dollar repair. So uh, that's disappointing. But, okay, I was just curious on that one.
Yeah, they Desmond did a a pretty deep, this is the detailed version of their report and they really went through everything. So we'll, I think we'll all digest it and kind of, we can look at the three options they put forward. It's fairly similar to when I was at the town, we did a a similar rehab program with the town hall parking garage. I mean, that was built in the eighties though, but um, we just did a a similar uh rehab program to extend the life of the garage. A lot of the similar recommendations. It's just an older facility, but.
Okay, any questions on the parking garage?
I just assure your comments, it's like the garage is sixteen years old and to and it's not that big and to have a.
I I would double check that age, though.
But to have two million dollars in repairs, it's like, who are we hiring? I I mean, I know we can't go back and get, but this is just seems to me that that there's, you know, just you need to be more careful of who we're hiring. I'd be curious of who we hired to do that garage originally.
Probably out of warranty. Um, all right, hearing no more questions, shall we move on? No worries. Perfect. Any more questions on the Hamilton Avenue parking garage? Nope. Okay, let's move on, please.
Okay, next one is the big one uh is HVAC, but you can see we're really starting to get to to a good point. There's two, I, we separated out, we did this last year. Uh, this, like a major project at G H S because that's like multimillion. So that's on its on its own. The rest of this is the HVAC uh program. And over the next two years for us, the priority is um is two items. Again, actually, so there's two requests in here and this is another thing that that Joe, you'll probably want to talk about. Is that the Havemeyer Building, we have two hundred thousand dollar request for the remaining unventilated uh spaces, uh which we do get a lot of complaints about frequently from employees, especially in the summer where the air gets really stale. One of those examples would be um right outside of Dr. Jones's office, that suite right there, there's no ventilation uh and no cooling. Um, it previously.
Is that where your office is?
No, I have a window unit in mine. Uh, so mine gets colder than than unfortunately some of the other people are are in. Um, the big one uh this year is for Western Middle School to do the design of the system. So Dan had a a total assessment of of Western Middle School HVAC. This is to put in a building-wide system there, HVAC uh air conditioning uh system. Um, the order of magnitude came in, can you add the the twenty six? The order of magnitude came in, I believe, at two uh at nine point four million to do the whole building. That's in twenty six. So our request in twenty five for design would give us better numbers, but that is from um an engineering firm that that gave us, what do you need to do to get a building-wide HVAC system in there? So that's that's the cost. The prioritization for twenty five is really getting us ready, the funding for the three hundred thousand to do the design for the nine point four.
Did we spend any of the S R money on doing anything at Western Middle School? I mean, I know we spent a large amount of money on ionization on stuff and I'm just curious if we had spent any of that money at Western Middle School.
I will follow up and give you a report on what we did with that funding, but per school.
Yeah, because I know it was, there was an ionization and then there were other things that we had done with HVAC with respect to the S R. I'd like to know what we did specifically related to HVAC and S R funding for each school. Because this seems to me, there's a quite a large expense. And if we had taken S R money to put into Western Middle School when we figured this was coming down the pipeline, that would have been a waste of money.
Yeah, I'll I'll get that to you. Um, I don't think, this is like, this is like to put in a building-wide HVAC system, which I don't think we have at Western Middle School. We don't have air conditioning or uh, yeah, it's all window units. So this is.
Some of the parts of that school don't have window units at all.
Yes, so this is unlike what we used most of the S R funding for, like the ionization or anything like that, we wouldn't have been able to do any of that here because we we don't have this building-wide HVAC system. So this is to do that, get rid of all the window units and and all of that.
Yeah, and just as a reminder that um A R P funding on the town side is where the ionization was coming through, not the school, yeah.
And um the year after Western, the one point two oh six. What does that relate to? Just get a preview.
Glenville.
Hearing no more questions, let's move on.
To to Cody's point too. So that nine point four million is is based on an estimate that that Dan does have from an engineering firm to specifically do that.
So, oh, I was, I had two questions where one was, we can go back to for ten seconds, you know, are the other middle schools, do they all have building-wide HVAC systems? Well, Central will be, well, when we redo it.
I'll follow up with you.
Okay, I was just curious, or you know, I I, you know, I should also say, like, even if it's not, then it's also what what of our elementaries have it? But then I I'm curious, since we went ahead of following year for one point two to Glenville, I know Karen and I probably have the exact same question, which is Glenville is a relatively brand new. I mean, we redid the whole school fifteen years ago, so I'm just wondering what HVAC needs to be done there versus in some of the older schools that haven't been touched.
Hey, you you want to note that question for Dan?
Frankly, for that amount, it must be an upgrade versus a nine. Yeah.
I'll I'll find out specifically for you on that.
You know, that's I, that's the only information I was wondering, like, you know.
It's a good question. Yep.
That's all.
Yeah, fair point. Uh.
No more HVAC.
Well, we can move on to the to the bigger HVAC, uh which is G H S. Um, and so this is uh hopefully finishing out all the work that we we have been uh investing in at G H S with the new chillers and boilers and um what the program here, pull up, pull up um um all the years. The program here is to go through the four uh houses and systematically uh upgrade and replace the equipment uh house by house. So to the uh, yes, but one of them is is done already. Uh, so we only need to do four, that I know. Yes. So the design, the funding in twenty five is to do the design of the system uh is to get, is to get a scope of what it would look like to to kind of do each house and then further refine that program and then go through uh the remaining four houses. G H S by G H S. And we're we're just treating G H S as its own because it's it's one third of the the school district basically and it has its own uh significant HVAC infrastructure.
Okay, moving on.
Julian Curtis, so the uh couple, there is a a change here. Um, so what we have, we we have the elevator, we have a building committee. Um, the chairs, Bill Kelly, Joe, you're on the committee. Um, we have funding for the uh elevator already. We have, this year we had appropriated eight hundred thousand uh for the front entryway. Then our remaining two major items that we had prioritized doing was uh two million dollars for the cafeteria and one point two million for like equipment and uh millwork replacements like cabinetry and stuff throughout the building because it does need i- if you've been there, obviously, it it needs a a little bit of a facelift. Um, talking to, uh, I met with Bill Kelly last Friday, uh, the bill, you, you'll, you could do your own update on the building, uh, committee. But what we did discuss is at the moment, uh, 2 million is, we're told by the architect is actually still a, a reasonable number to use. Based on the limited information that you, you have at, at this point. Um, and if we were going to propose this, uh, from scratch. It would make more sense to move the 1.2 million, uh, up from fiscal year 26 to fiscal year 25. So you see a request here for 3.2, uh, million instead, uh, to appropriate that. It could be done in multi-year phases, uh, probably the recommendation and the preference for mobilization of, of bidding out and contracting and maybe doing work in one summer since. It is fairly limited in scope would be to appropriate that, um, at once instead of over two years. And that's really the only change. And, uh, uh, Bill did confirm that with the information we have at the moment, tho- those are still. Fairly reasonable numbers. However, they, they could change, but they're fairly reasonable to use at this stage. Joe, I don't know if you have anything to add from the building committee.
I concur to what you just said. You're very accurate.
What is the 2 million at the cafeteria going for?
The 2 million at the cafeteria, it's the smallest cafeteria in the district and it's to resize the cafeteria. And I don't believe y- you can answer this better than I. It's either going to be a renovation to expand the existing space or repurposing spaces within the building to. Uh, increase capacity.
We're still looking at the opportunities and feasibilities of, of both those, uh, cases.
So we really don't know if the 2 million is a accurate number at this point then.
We don't have the money to do the engineering, the, uh, architecture work on it. So we still have to request that.
So when would we request? That would that be, because then that's not part of this 3.2 then. In order to figure that, we'd have to request the money. To figure out how much we need to spend.
Well, that would be a blaze question, Blaze. By the puzzled look on your face, you don't have an answer for that.
I don't, uh, that, that I, I did not hear from Bill the other day that you don't have the A and E money.
We'll get that to you, Karen.
Yeah. Let me, let me answer that question. I'll follow. That's a good follow up. The A and E money for the Julian Curtis. To follow up on that. Okay, that's Julian Curtis. Life safety systems. This is one that's a combination program where we're trying to do what I just discussed earlier, which is really build out some systematic. Elements to replacing life safety systems and fire pumps. For fiscal year 25, the main request is, um, the fire alarm system at GHS. And it's, uh, you know, changing the type of smoke heads throughout the, uh, district. Um, and then doing the relevant, uh, not throughout the district, throughout the building and doing the relevant wiring, uh, as needed. That's the main one for, for fiscal year 25. And Kim, if you want to add the out year, uh, two, just so we have it for context while we're sitting here. Uh, can you sort it by year?
Well, I he- I heard the fire alarm system was recently tested at the high school and it works just fine.
Yep.
Sorry, bad joke. Too soon?
Okay. So, uh, yeah, uh, this is a fairly straightforward program. You'll see like way in the out years that there's just like placeholder, uh, numbers. Uh, as we kinda go through some more systematically what we have. One thing that we're doing is I'm talking about hiring engineering firms is, uh, we have, we're gonna engage with funding from this year, a life safety like engineer. To, we have five different fire alarm systems throughout the district of varying ages and totally different types. We have five different fire alarm vendors. Uh, and then separately, we have a security program, uh, that is largely independent or sometimes is like patch worked, like. We're, we're tapping into the fire alarm. We're not, you'll hear from like fire and police on a recent inspection, um, when they're out with us that. Like the, the police department wants to have a standalone system, um, and then the fire, and they want that to be the priority. Uh, and then the fire department, um, was upset about the, uh, fact that the. Uh, lockdown overrides the fire alarm where they're patched in together, this versus that. So rather than try to keep patchworking some of these pieces, we're gonna, uh, engage a outside, uh, professional to come in. Do, give us an assessment of the whole thing and give us a plan on how do we, we're, we're still spending money on this every year. So how do we more strategically? Uh, move this into a direction where we're merging security and fire into one. And then we get to where we have one district wide, uh, system in, instead of five, five different types.
Okay. Any questions? Let's move on.
I'm gonna speed up. Okay. Uh.
If you talk twice as fast, we'll finish half as, uh, take half as much.
All right. Yeah. Old Greenwich, um, it is what it is. I, I have a piece of paper. That, that is, uh, so I'll, I'll just pass. If you just pass, you can take a look at that, but it's the same document you saw at the bill, at the budget committee, but that is with the escalation in. And they will have a better estimate in December. And their building committee is moving forward and they're going to come to seek either an interim versus same, same conversation we just had, it's different timing.
I think we can move past that one.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that at length at another time. Okay. Other paving, painting and lighting is a, it's a small request. It's a hundred and, uh, $16,000 this year. It's to do, uh, to light the parking lot at ISD.
Any questions on the 116,000? Nope. Let's move on.
Other minor, uh, renovations. I want to say this is a placeholder. Yeah, this program will probably end up shifting out. Uh, it was, it was totally different and it's on here more for, for our team internally as a placeholder to, to realign a number of items. So there's no discussion at the moment.
Let's move on.
Um, playground replacement. Uh, this is something that we get. Every year from, um, Parks and Rec. This year we have a, uh, we're doing the same thing. It's aligned with the age of the, the system. Um, the numbers to Cody's point need to be further refined, which we're working on with, uh, Parks and Recreation and our vendor to get better numbers. And what I can do is share actually like the longer term kinda life cycle and order for, for playgrounds. So she wouldn't win. That's like a good budget committee, uh, item.
Okay.
Okay. That's playgrounds, plumbing and electrical. That's our other big program where I, I will say, I'll give Dan and Kim a lot of credit. We're really going through this program extensively. Um, this year. The, it's mostly minor, uh, it's really minor maintenance items. The, the big request down there is, let's see, is 350,000. That's to upgrade the electrical service. At the building. Um, and then the other one is middle school. Uh, we're doing a similar, uh, item. Item there, uh, upgrading electrical. And, uh, this is a fairly straightforward, uh. Request from facilities.
Just in terms of understanding budget wise, plumbing and electrical are different functions, other than these are just kind of our more routine item, like. I'm just kind of anticipating where the BET is gonna say, but plumbing and electrical are different functions.
We have been funding it this way for a while now. So. Trying to keep some of them consistent where we can. Yeah. So I think it'll be okay.
Okay.
Okay. We can get more information for that. Uh, renovate gymnasiums. This is a program where we're kinda merging everything into like focusing on the gym. We kinda had like different elements of the gyms. Like the floor and flooring, the walls and here a piece in athletics. So we've merged it into one. And we're going through all the gym systematically in 25. Um, I asked, uh, this is one of the things Pete, thank you. He was prioritizing his requests, his number one thing. Uh, for athletics was, it's replacing the curtain. Oh, okay. Uh, and it's replacing the curtain at GHS. It has holes in it. Mike. Is outside. And, um, so it's replacing the curtain, which has holes in it. And then we're gonna do the gym floors due for Glenville and the gym floor at Julian Curtis.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Uh, we're dwindling here.
So since I, I know Laura is gonna wanna. Hear about, uh, number 24, which is Riverside. I'll ask a quick question in the interim to buy some time here. Um, all of these cute little Excel spreadsheets that you have here that are populating this, are, are we gonna be able to get a copy? So we're, we have a better understanding of. It's populating these numbers.
Yeah. Perfect. That's the plan here.
Yeah. And I know these are obviously placeholders. So we'll.
Yeah. So you could just.
We'll take that with.
The Excel chart so we could click on it. I mean, I, I wouldn't expect, I don't wanna, I don't want the printout. So I'd rather just have the. The tool itself if.
You hope it are, those numbers, those little detailed numbers are the things that are giving me on the CIP sheets, right? Cause those are the details. So, right? So it's kinda, yeah. The, we get the CIP sheets. We don't need the Excel because then the CIP sheets also have more detail on.
But the CIP sheets are only gonna be for what we're gonna be asking for, for this budget.
No, no, no. They, they have the out years in them, don't they?
They have the out years in them. Yeah. But you only do a sheet for things that have a 25 request.
Right. Okay. Got it.
The ones in the dark blue, uh, don't, they won't have a sheet. But they do have out your numbers.
Okay. You know, it's just, just so we just have an understanding that way. Yeah. And I did my job and bid my time, you know? So now we can talk about Riverside.
How do you think they feel at Hamilton Avenue? Let's move on. Here we go.
Okay. So. Okay. All right. So that was gymnasiums. Um, the next one is, uh, Riverside. And this one I think would be a, a decision point, uh, and it's really. So there's the two major decisions we kinda mentioned at the building committee. Are we asking for feasibility in? This year, or are we asking for it next year? I think there could be a question about like capacity. Uh, to like in terms, especially of staff on some of the building committees at the moment, that might be a fair question. Um, Joe, to your point, this is something I don't have an answer to at the moment, but likely we'd probably ask for more in feasibility in light of the MI, uh, conversation. So we could get farther along upfront. To know where we would go. Last year, you'll recall, um, we took the KD and G number. Um, and we basically, a- as a board, we cut it in half for signaling to feasibility to about a $15 million renovation instead of a 30 million. And we did that to signal. So if we do appoint a committee, um, people kind of have a, uh. Good understanding of going in from the bear, like from the very beginning of the process, um, of what. Type of work the committee would do in feasibility. Uh, so the couple of decision points would be, are we asking in 25 or 26 to start feasibility? And, uh, what do we kinda want that request to look like?
Well, we'll have to talk about that one, but that's. Oh, you have your hand up. We've been playing just inject.
You were ready to move to the next thing. I know you're right. Um. I'm gonna give you my thoughts, Blaze, and, and maybe Mike's gonna agree with us. I think, I think our notion of cutting the number as a signaling. Now looking at how the budget process plays out is flawed. Because the problem is when we put a placeholder number in, the other town bodies believe that's the number. And I, I am like $15 million, however many years from now is, is kinda ludicrous, right? That might be just the cost of an elevator. So I think we, no, no, I'm saying, I, I. Or an Asia. So I think we should rethink that. What's the scope or what the messaging is? Um, and maybe be a little more realistic in our estimates, particularly given what we've learned, particularly in the case of Old Greenwich, which is not. You know, Bell's, it's, it's a renovation for health and safety and ADA, um, which would the Riverside one would be. So I thi- I, my. Suggestion would be, I think we need to increase the A and E number. I think we need to increase the years out construction number. Um, and I think it was already bummed from last year to this year, and I would vote to keep it in for this year for feasibility.
Michael.
Thanks, Joe. So yeah, Christina makes all, all solid points. They, um, I was thinking the same thing about realistic. Um, not to tread backwards, but on the way over here, thinking about $2 million for cafeteria, knowing, um, what we've priced things out. So I'm, I'm curious about. That, all of that. But we're on this. The other thing, not to, um, belabor the point, but the other thing I'm wondering about is why 28, 29? The, um, that's, that's, that's five years. They, I'm wondering, I mean, if our cycle, last time I saw this, it was, it was a three year. It was a three year cycle. They, um, now we've got this every other thing. We know that. The initial 150 was in last year's budget. So I'm wondering about, um. Waiting another six, seven years for construction. Um, that seems. Um, it's, it's, it, it, it seems un, un. Right. Well, 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 my son's in first grade and this year's kindergarten will never see it. Yeah. So that, that seems, it seems odd. Yeah.
Karen.
No, I just, I mean, the, the, these were part of our 15, the, 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 the two, two school, well, you know. Old Greenwich and JC and Riverside were the first three schools to, that were slated to go, that were part of our 15 year master facility plan. And we got that plan from KG and D. Ca- Kathleen, how, how long ago was that given to us from KG and D? No, you were on the board. I thought you, weren't you? But we. The first draft was. Yeah. So my, my point is, is those were the first three to go. We haven't even gotten any of the first two to go. So I think it's, yeah, putting those placeholder numbers as, has, as I said earlier today, it's kind of, uh, got, gotten us in, gotten us in the Kishka, but I. I, I definitely think we need to leave it in because it, it is, otherwise it, it just gets ignored and, and overlooked repeatedly. So.
I think it's, we're all agreeing we leave it in, but what are we leaving in? A realistic number or, or a half or make believe number that's gonna be thrown back at us? So to Christina's point.
But I know, no, I agree.
What number are you thinking? We have.
To be honest with you, what I'm thinking, to be honest with you, I would throw a million dollars in to get us through feasibility. And maybe if we have this MI issue to get down the road in a year to see, you know, and then they, depending on the progress. Then there could always be additional A and E money for A and A, A and E. So, uh, that would be a suggestion. Again, I'm plucking it out of thin air, but it seems like 150 is. Way too short.
Thinking feasibility, 1 million in 24, 25.
And then maybe a million in 25, 26 for more A and E money.
What about the actual project, uh, which we have for what? 15 million here where we should be, but that's a.
Why don't we just use what's, like, we have plenty of data at this point, right? So I mean, you know, take an old Greenwich situation. What did that end up costing us and just kinda go with that?
Pretty clear more. That's exactly spot on. Let's use data we've collected and used, realistic data and put the number of what we think Riverside is gonna cost us. Instead of some make believe number that's gonna be thrown at us, uh, saying, how come you put 15 million when, when it's costing us 43 million?
Exactly, exactly. And then at least it's, we're having the discussion now and then that number will sit in the budget for a couple of years and then we can fight, they'll fight about it later.
I don't, uh, Karen?
Don't, on, on the data point, don't we have enough data to be able to assess what the appropriate amount for feasibility? I mean, I just, I don't wanna throw in a million dollars because it's just pulling it out of the sky.
We're just saying that, that if we really, the whole, this whole notion that if we have to do MI first and we only do feasibility, we're already.
Comes after A and E.
Before A and E. Feasibility is first.
No, I know it does, but MI comes after A and E.
But if you only do feasibility and you have no A and E money out for two years, you can't do anything towards MI.
I understand that, but what I, unless I'm hearing you're wrong, what I, what you're saying is that million dollars that you're suggesting we put in for this year. Would be enough for feasibility to get us for MI, but it's, but isn't that supposed to come out spaced upon? So you do.
You could still sequence it the same way. You just spend the money in linear or you do, you do feasibility first.
No, I know you do. So I'm saying, what is the number for feasibility in 2024, 25? Then what is the number for? A and E that gets you up to the AMI in 25, 26, that you would, that's where you would budget that for. And then you would put the. Whatever the cost of the building would be, you suggest that for 26.
So you're saying do it in a three year.
Well, that's what we usually do for the three years. CM, CM.
Yes, that, that's fine too. I just was thinking if there were out periods of time, it'd be. But the question is, how much was feasibility in Old Greenwich? Well, we did it a long time ago, so it's kind of hard to know what.
But, but, but let's, I mean, I think what we're saying is, let's, let's ask our, our district professionals to be thoughtful and look at comps and figure, and see if we can have some realistic numbers. Because obviously the Riverside project isn't quite the Old Greenwich project either. There's an elevator, another elevator and things like that. But there's, there is enough similarities that we can be thoughtful about.
Okay, makes sense. So we'll, uh, boost the numbers up and consistent with, we'll get some information about feasibility, uh, escalated from past costs. And then, uh, uh, let's use, uh, Old Greenwich, the numbers from Old Greenwich and use those as our forward projections.
Yep, yep. We'll put together a package for that. I think that's the exact conversation we were, we were hoping to have when we gave the document actually to the, to the budget committee the other day. Uh, it's actually really, it's a prioritization of all of our projects, and I can circulate that to the full board because on here, this is a statement of our priorities. We have an order of schools that we're proposing here. So to Mike, to your point, we really kind of want to look at what we're, I'll, I'll send that. I didn't print that out for the full group here today, but I'll circulate that same item because that has our prioritization of each school for the next few years of what we're going to do. Two, two quick points, we'll do exactly what, what you just asked. On the, uh, the dollars, when you're looking in the out years, uh, the guidance that we have, and, and I think we need to reconcile this as a town, and I just got the guidance again, is to use today's dollars. So the whole 15-year plan is, there's no inflation adjustment here. It's in today's dollars, and that's the direction. Every year, the numbers should change because you're putting the whole plan in today's dollars. And that, that's the direction we got from the town. On the placeholder comment, I do think that as, as a budget process, it would be worth us talking to the town globally. Because I, I just know, this is my own personal experience here in, in being in other departments. This budget process is largely dependent on placeholders. And most of our departments, um, in town, when you're doing 15-year planning, have extensive placeholder numbers in the out years. Because you're trying to build a financial model that shows these items. And Christine, I know this isn't you, but I do think that the placeholder kind of conversation that we've seen over the last year does make a number of items more challenging. Like I'm also thinking about how DPW, I mean, the road paving program, when you start getting in the out years, just if you sit in the budget meetings, those are placeholder numbers, uh, for very significant portions of our overall capital conversation. And so it would probably be helpful to get additional guidance from the town on these out-year numbers. Because a, a lot of capital planning is placeholder numbers based on kind of your information at the time, so.
And that's why the Old Greenwich information in terms of what a renovation costs, that gives us a better, a better placeholder number. I mean, we cut it down pretty artificial. It, it was kind of a.
Absurd.
No, no, but I remember when we did it because we all said, well, let's send a signal that we're not doing a full blown renovation, but maybe that, so I think it was flawed. It seemed like a good idea at the time, but I think we would all agree that was flawed, and let's, let's use real numbers that we have now.
That's right. And as far as the, uh, being consistent with the town on current value numbers rather than escalated numbers, as long as the town's doing it and we're doing it and everyone's doing it the same way, everyone could do their own calculations on their own anticipated escalations. So we'll understand it at that point.
Don't you think that should be footnoted? I feel like that's a big thing to not note somewhere.
If everyone's doing it the same way, then everyone knows they're looking at a number, knowing that that's today's number, and in their mind, they have to escalate it. It's not clean, but it's consistent. It's a common denominator.
I, I agree with Kathleen. We, we need to, we need to denote that somewhere.
This is in today's dollars.
Yeah, put a big old star.
With the town, and that, that is the guidance again, as of now for fiscal year 25, today's dollars. And for the community, that, that has changed, uh, three or four years ago, to your point, if you were paying attention to the budget process, they used to put in escalation costs in the out years. Um, but there was not consistency in the departments too, using escalation, so. We have plenty of space on here, we can add, uh, we can add a note. Okay, uh, to keep moving on, um, roofs. Uh, uh, do you want me to keep going through, Joe?
Well, please continue.
Roofs. Um, this is another one of those programs I was talking about that is kind of a hybrid program where we really want to get the data that we have on the roofs organized into a system that should directly inform our capital request. This year's request is, uh, for 2025, uh, would be 350,000. It's the last wing, the rear wing, wing at North Manus of the ceiling. And then at Western Middle School, it's a $2.5 million estimate, and Dan does have, these are fairly refreshed, uh, numbers, um, for a roof replacement over the tech and music space of the building. I would say the rest of the out years, uh, in this meeting specifically are probably, uh, as we get too far out, not worth going through. As we are trying to take the data and build what I told you, it should be a fairly easily straightforward, like the roof was installed here. It's good for 25 years. It should be replaced here. Um, and that should be better organized.
Hearing none, let's move on.
Security entry redesign, this is a new project. The interim, uh, funding I'll request last year is largely, uh, completed. Uh, there's two locations that have an issue and need some, uh, uh, redesign on the entry. That is, uh, 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 Eastern Middle School and, um, ISD. And they need a slight, uh, redesign, and I don't know how much detail we want to get in right now on the specifics of the entry. I don't really want to get into too much more.
Take the entrance.
Yeah, this is the, um, this is in relation to the entryway interim for the secure entry project. And that is pretty much complete throughout the entire district. These, there's three locations left. One of them, we're going to resolve with existing funding. Two remaining, um, are here before you. And I can get you more information. I don't want to talk about the specifics.
I think we can move on. I guess this question, so there's a question. Good, Laura?
Does it require MI?
That's actually a good question.
It, 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 it really shouldn't. No.
Okay.
My comment.
I won't get, I don't play this.
No problem.
Um, the next one is stage renovation. Uh, we've been using this funding to upgrade the stages. What we're doing here is proposing to do a, uh, assessment for $50,000 in 25. All the out years, we've just kind of deleted everything and put in placeholder numbers. And we'd like to engage a architect to, uh, not an architect, but whoever specializes in this, um, to come in and study all of the stage, uh, infrastructure. So like at the elementary schools, we know that we have concerns, like some of the curtains are old, they're non-compliant. We have stages that are at heights that are not compliant at this point, and, um, there's lighting infrastructure up above head, like people's heads and stuff. And we don't really have a good handle on that. So the first step would be bringing somebody in to take a look at it.
So that's the 50 grand.
That's the 50.
Okay, I guess, is there questions?
Do you think that's, I mean, there's a lot of stages. Do you think $50,000 is enough money to go through and for that assessment?
We do, yeah. This is an industry that, that's a good question, um, but it's an industry that Dan comes from, uh, prior to this. And, and 50,000, he actually contacted a couple of companies to get a rough idea, and, and that's, that seems to be a reasonable number.
And we're thinking that then, that stage renovation project that, you know, all those findings will take the next seven years? Is that what the 155 moved out?
Yeah, I mean, hopefully, unless, I think what we would see is like a life safety, uh, concern that we would address immediately. And unless the, the board wants to change, uh, direction, it's kind of that, that comment of predictable, stable increases based on prioritizing those items. I will level out that number because that does look like it's an old carryover with like slight inflation in it. That really should just be the same, uh, across the board, Kim, if we could just.
Okay.
Pick a number. Okay, um, stairs, ramps and walls, uh, uh, another ongoing, uh, recurring program. Uh, this year, we're looking for, this is like exterior, uh, to the building. Um, $340,000, uh, JC, uh, this is, oh yeah, the primary focus here this year is there's the retaining wall. Joe, you'll, you'll be familiar with this. So there's the patio in the back of the school, the retaining wall, um, needs to be replaced, it's leaning.
Which school?
Julian Curtis.
Oh, Julian Curtis, okay.
So where the patio is, that wall along the side of it, it's, it's starting to lean, and so that would be our prioritized item for, for fiscal year 25.
Okay.
Right, there's a broken, I don't have it in here, there's a broken wall, the stone wall at Riverside is broken, fallen over. I've seen it here at all, but it's.
Okay, uh, we'll, we'll take a look at that, though. Um, vertical transportation is elevators. This is of existing elevators. Uh, I think the same thing here is, this is something that, that was not in KDG. So we, we don't have good data on it right now, so the thought is, um, I think we have seven elevators. Uh, does that sound right, Dan? So we have seven elevators. We're going to bring in a company to take a look at all of them, to do a quick assessment on their condition, the pistons and the pulleys, and make sure, and then put together a maintenance plan for that.
Parkway, North Street, or 1-4.
Glenville's 1 floor.
Glenville's 1 floor.
Julian Curtis doesn't have one. Old Greenwich doesn't have one.
Okay.
I think it'd be off by a hundred percent.
Is it a lift? Yeah, Glenville has a lift, not an elevator.
Vertical transportation, is that the term we're using here?
That's the perfect term. Uh, if it can choose your battles, uh, on what we're going to go with. Okay.
Next.
Uh, okay, so windows and doors, that's a big one. Yeah. Yeah, they are.
As we just.
Yes.
Okay, so just to first look at the, the focus here, um, for fiscal year 25, this is a discussion point. Um, you'll see big numbers in windows and doors. We've done a lot of work as a district, uh, in funding, replacing exterior windows and doors. Um, the, the big, the bulk of the requests for the next few years are specific to the high school, so we'll talk about that one last. The other ones are just, are, are pretty straightforward, minor items like cost cob, it's replacing all the exterior remaining doors. Uh, Hamilton Avenue, there's a little bit of work left to do on the wood doors, uh, replacing those. ISD, uh, replacing a few of the exterior doors, um, that are rusted and putting in a new, a new type of door. Those are all, uh, fairly straightforward maintenance requests. The big one is the high school. And, uh, this is a number that I think we're going to try to refine, and we're going to bring in another company to give us a, a second opinion. Um, but we, we need to understand better the condition of the windows there in relation to the replacement. Uh, so for the next, if you could pull up the out years too, we have kind of a, a number in here of systematically replacing the windows. This was on their scheduled replacement. If you recall, um, and Dr. Jones, you might be able to articulate this better than I, if I, if I say this wrong, but we have an abatement issue. Uh, when we went to go remove the windows, we, we have an abatement issue at the, uh, schools. And, uh, right now that is contained within the wall and brick and membrane. Um, so there's not an exposure, but when we go to replace the windows, it's going to be significantly expensive, uh, primarily because of the PCBs that are leaching into the bricks. And it's balancing this concept of the fact that the PCBs leach longer, the longer you wait, the farther they pull in, so the more bricks you have to, to pull out. Um, we're gonna get a, uh, we had a environmental once, and I'm speaking when I, I wasn't here, but I'm speaking, I think, fairly accurately, so correct me if I'm wrong. We, when we went to go start window replacement there, and this was discovered, you know, fairly quickly, and some of you on the boards, you probably remember hearing about this. Um, an environmental, uh, specialist company came in, it's the one that we've used for other items, hygienics. They did the testing, then they confirmed the results, uh, they confirmed that it was encapsulated. Um, and so it's kind of been deferred at this point, but we're really now coming up on more of a building-wide replacement cycle. So this is a discussion point at the moment, really tonight, because we're not making any decisions, but we're gonna, we're gonna need to get some better estimates. One on really when, do, do the windows need to be replaced right now? And then if they do, we'll get, we're going to get a second opinion on the, uh, abatement item. Um, and then if we do this, hopefully we'll find out that we can also then do it in a way that's kind of systematic. Because, um, I think Dr. Jones has had experience with this in another school district. And it can be extensively disruptive to the entire campus because, depending on the level of leaching and how much brick has to be removed. So hopefully we find out that the windows still don't need to be replaced, that we're going to try to find out before our next full meeting. And then if we do find out where they do need to be replaced, we'll find out on a second opinion on the abatement.
Karen?
Can I ask a silly question? I see line, I guess it's 483, and then 493. It's $3 million for GHS and FY25 and $3 million in FY27, and it says exactly the same thing.
Yeah, so you'll actually also see in 28, so the reason you'll see the years being driven up is because the way it's built in here right now would be doing wing by wing, floor by floor.
Thank you. That's what I was going to ask, is that per wing? As, so it's not, so it's not even just 3 million for the schools?
No, 3 million is just one small section. Um, Dan did get a, like a really rough estimate. Um, depending on the, we would need to find out the level of leaching, which will really be variable, uh, in the cost. But it's easily a multimillion, multi-year project. Multi-summer, yeah.
You hoping to find some money that we duplicated, we didn't get there. Oh, well.
That, I, I, that would have been good.
Yes.
We got one earlier. That was like a million bucks.
Exactly. Blaze, you might not know the answer to this question, but is there any benefit as far as R rating in the new windows that we will benefit energy efficiency on, or do we not know that?
Uh, I, I don't know that off the top of my head, but the, the two things when we're replacing windows now are, another item of that is energy efficiency and the standards on school security with ballistic filming. And so as we do replace windows going forward, uh, we will also be adding an element of that as well. It's just a, a new state requirement, I believe.
So a benefit, always nice to have benefits.
Yeah, there, in addition to the new window, there's energy efficiency, and then there's added security, and that's, that's a new building code requirement or, or state ed requirement. I don't know off the top of my head, but it's required, a certain level of ballistic glass on exterior doors on schools as you do go back in retro.
I'm impressed that you knew that. Thank you.
Game to the max here, quite a lot of that left. The last fiscal year 25 request is Western Middle School soil remediation. And we just got the bid, uh, in, and we're issuing an award to the company. Um, and where the budget sits right now, remember, we've had, uh, we had 2 million, uh, and then we had the 8 million, and then we had the 10 million, uh, this past year. Brings us to a total of 20 million. Uh, we're put, we have no contingency. And what we're, what we've learned from the high school project right now, uh, and Amy's incredible, she's right now going for an interim, uh, for additional funding. And we thought we were done on that last tranche of funding, but she's there now. And so this interim request, or not, this funding request would be to avoid that scenario. We know that the soil cost, and it's the same exact company, and they were the low bidder, but they're also doing an excellent job at GHS. We know that their soil cost is extensive, and that's the reason that they're back for an interim, the, the soil removal cost. And so we're just anticipating some contingency here. That's the 2 million, based on what we just saw happen with the high school.
Karen?
So I think, wouldn't this, despite all you said, wouldn't this be better as an interim as, as opposed to in our capital? Simply because we have already gotten, you know, we already made a commitment as a board, I think last year, we're fun, getting this funded. And I think the BET committed to this as whatever you need, we will get this done. And therefore, I mean, I see this number here as being 118.2% over the recommendation from the BET. And I'm just suggesting that they've already agreed, whatever we needed, we'd get. So why wouldn't we go to them for an interim?
I, I, I think we could reach out to them, um, historically, at least in my experience here, uh, until very recently, an interim was like an extremely taboo thing. Uh, you do not go for interims until fairly recently, um, unless you absolutely need one. For this, and you typically would anticipate, like, we know, so like with this project, we have 0%, we have 0% contingency. Um, and a standard practice even from the town is, I think we upped it to 20% contingency, it used to be 10, uh, now it's 20. So I, I, I think I could ask to the first. I, I, I think I could ask to the first selectmen on what their guidance would be because he has, they have actually been the ones to put all the funding in. We've actually never asked for any funding for this. Through this process, all the requests have been funded through actually the first selectmen adding it back in and appropriating it over the, the last three years.
But my, my opinion, it's better order if we expect these costs to be a budgeted item rather than saying, let's go for an interim, because when explaining this to the budget committee, the B E T budget committee and the full B E T, uh, the point made that you made that they promised to fund it, they will leave it in place as a budget item. So it makes a lot more sense and more efficient and better accounting to do it the, the way we're suggesting it. Michael.
I think I, I see both sides. I think it makes sense from an accounting standpoint to, to, to have it reflected somewhere. I think we just have to be mindful that no one is seeing this. We need to communicate it that way. No one is seeing this as a 2024 expense. They, um, you know, we're hopefully, you know, we're getting this done as soon as possible and that might be an interim, but for as far as a budgeting prospect, I guess it makes sense to not lose sight of it. So nobody's surprised and say, yeah, no, we had it in the capital budget. Here it was.
Yes. Karen.
That's, that was one we, he's, you know, a question I had because, you know, I, I know we are shovels in the ground a little later than had been expected for this project. Um, but it was my understanding that this was going to be done right in this year so that students would be back out on those fields because so if I'm looking at this and now I'm seeing we're asking for the, you know, two million dollar contingency funds in twenty-four, twenty-five, which means we won't even get those till over the summer. I'm a little confused as to how that aligns with our timing to get the fields open.
Yeah, we, it's going to be a year-long project. There's no way that this is all going to be finished going into the following summer. Um, it's, and until we really start the work, it's like the high school. Uh, again, if we hit soil issues or anything happens or, you know, delivery on any of the turf, um, kind of product. You know, we just, we don't know, we don't know, but I, it's gonna, it's not going to be a fast project. Cause first they have to remove all the soil and then you have to come in and rebuild, you know, the field.
And we're still working on the agreement with Bimbo Bakery to, uh, uh, go past their easements with the, uh, with the contaminated soil.
Well, um, maybe this is not a budget discussion and maybe it's something we need to have before next week's board meeting when we get an update, but I mean, I can go back and look through my notes. This was not the discussion we had when we were first talking about the remediation. So.
Um, and just to the budgeting point, I think it's good to put it in. I, I know we see both sides, but the fact of the matter is, is unbudgeted items which come in as interims. You know, they're not reflective in the mill rate and, and, and the town, it doesn't want to start dipping in on big ticket, you know, if we have a flood or something comes up, that's one thing. I think if it's an anticipated and expected expenditure and frankly, doing a project with zero percent contingency is sort of an act of craziness as we've seen from our building committees. So I think, I think it would be wise to just leave it in. If the B E T decides to take it out, then so be it. But then we've done our job in communicating it.
Agreed. Any more on this Western Middle School? Now Blaze, what are we doing with this blue section? Blowing through this or what's, what's our plan here?
Yeah, we can, we can blow through that pretty quickly. Um, and what I'll do on Western Middle School is I can also reach out to the town too, to find out, like to Mike's point, I do know that, uh, G H S like from an auditor accounting perspective, it was kind of cited for a similar reason that you, that you just mentioned. Um, it's not really anything to do with us. Uh, so we can also get some guidance from them on the accounting piece of it and we can, we can go from there. As long as people know. I think that's the most important part of this conversation is just making people know. So in the out years, the rest of this would be like what we're submitting with our capital year plan. Um, tonight, it's not worth necessarily going through each of these. We'll go through these. To, uh, Karen and Christina's point, you know, the, these though, won't have a project sheet because there's no fiscal year twenty-five request, but they do like directly relate. Um, to the, like the five-year window that we really go through the extensive review when we go over to the town. So it's a fair point in terms of prioritization. Um, all fairly straightforward. I think the biggest things to focus on, uh, the, the addition here would be that we added in, in the out years, uh, like the field upgrades to some of our fields. If you recall, uh, the field master plan was, uh, a multi-year, multi-department effort on the fields. Many of you probably participated in it. Um, Kim, you could pass this out. Uh, I took the notes from that. It's all out year numbers and we, anything we were already doing or like CMS's field was on there. For the board of ed, the decision for field master plan was really prioritizing Western Middle School. And the town's essentially at capacity of taking anything else offline for the next couple of years, uh, Western Middle School. Um, but you'll see in the out years, those schools specifically, and on the back of that, it kind of was the estimated gained capacity townwide in playing hours and the front of that was a, was a budget item. Um, and, and that was led by Parks and Rec, but had key stakeholders from each group. Uh, Kathleen, there's a lot of hours, uh, that went into that. And then there's a whole very in-depth report. And then there was a, a presentation that we gave. Um, to get to that, but that's just the excerpt of the two most important slides for this conversation. Um, the other kind of major items that are in the out years, I think that the board would, would think of or something, Mike, that you touched on. What, and I'll circulate the document that we had at the budget committee the other day. What major renovation prioritization and numbers do we kind of want to discuss? Uh, we have on here, you know, North Myanis, North Street, ISD, in addition to Riverside, all fairly recent, uh, or all, all within um, our next multi-year plan here. And so that's like a fair conversation, I think, for the board to have. And other than that, unless you want me to go through kind of specific projects, um, we're doing a lot of data gathering on these projects in the out years. So we have like sport court replacement. We have an, we have someone in partnership with Parks and Rec. We hired the company to go through. They're like measuring the concrete, doing all that and kind of giving us a concept of what it looks like. Um, and same thing on a lot of these other items. Uh, that's why they're down here in the out years because we really need a lot better data.
Blaze, I think the data you're giving us and for us to digest this on our own, because I'm sure all of us are going to take this big piece of paper home and hanging on, on the wall of one of our favorite rooms. Of course. Yeah. Oh, good place. Yes. Yes. So we'll get that information. But Laura, you have a question?
Just a quick question because it disappeared. It wasn't funded last year. What about the G H S cell phone service?
Oh, good question. Yeah. Um, it is, if it's not, if we didn't add it on here yet. So they just did, uh, the first selectman just had, uh, right before school started, like a week before school started, they had a crane out there, uh, holding a cell tower, um, at two, you know, holding the, holding the device. So that would be a cell tower. Um, at two different locations, that would be two possible locations. And they, uh, with I T, we were walking the building, doing a, uh, I'm blanking on the name of the kind of test, but basically seeing, does the signal uh, penetrate the building to all the points that are critical for us? And then we will decide if it doesn't, we're gonna come up with a recommendation like for our next meeting. And if it does, the first selectman, uh, was going to lead the effort on, on a cell tower in coordination with, with the, the overall board of ed. Um, but last year it was, the, the funding was removed for the solution we had put forward. Um, in lieu of the cell tower, uh, test first and we don't have the results of that test yet.
We'll have more information, our next update, and we'll be able to put that somewhere into the budget.
I'll have to reach out and find out because we, we probably should have the results fairly soon.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
So that's, that's a separate item. It's not going to be considered under I T, which you said got moved to operating.
Yeah, only one, only one specific piece of I T's budget got moved to operating. It was their big like annual refresh. Uh, and it was just like a replacing plugs. And, um, to the comment too, I think I just summed up on the piece of paper I passed out. The request this year, if you take out the two items that were, were highly likely to, to look at as interim funding, uh, items, the central middle school building committee and the old Greenwich building committee at some point this fiscal year, uh, if you take those out, our request is actually only 26 million dollars all in, um, which is everything else. Take those two projects out of this number right here, the inflation adjusted numbers that, that James is, is, is just absolutely awesome and gave us for, for that for now. And same thing for the central middle school building committee. Um, if we take those out, we're at 26 million.
Okay. Thank you. Any further?
Thank you, Blaze.
Of course.
That was impressive. That was the most detailed we've had of this in a long time, uh, at least a first look. So thanks.
You know a lot of stuff. Well done.
Thank you. And, and really huge thanks to, to Dr. Jones and the whole team here, because we've done
And Kim.
Dan and, and everybody, really.
Okay. Fantastic. All right. Then, uh, no more questions. Then we're going to move into executive session. Michael. Does anybody, Karen like to second?
No, you have to say what you.
Okay. Uh, all, all in favor, please raise your hand. Uh, that's unanimous. All right. Cody, and you agreed to be in executive session?
I also have to remind Mike to, uh, close everything else off and you have to invite once we're in here.
If you're going to stay in this room and have Cody participate, I don't know if that you might have to go to like somebody else.
He's got to be on a phone.
In a phone, somebody else, somewhere else.
All right. So Mike, we'll go. All right, Mike, we'll move into another room and, uh, and then we'll put Cody on his cell phone.
Excellent. And just give me a heads up when you're coming back.
I shall. I shall.
But it didn't, that's what I'm saying. I'm curious.
You have a motion to adjourn?
We are called officially back to order.
I have a motion to adjourn.
It's second by Karen. All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. We are now adjourned. Okay, thanks everybody.